Good evening and welcome to the August 3, 2020, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'm going to start with reading a script from the Governor suspending open meeting law. We can do this online. This is Select Board Chair Tom Locusa. I'll be confirming that all members and persons on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve Morantz?
Yes.
Richard Foster?
Yes.
And Mark Gold?
Yes.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Yes.
Paul Pesterzic? I know you're here, Paul.
Yes.
We can see you, okay. And Debbie House?
Yes.
All right. And this anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond the affirmative. Chief John Dearborn?
Yes.
Okay. This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistently with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have our meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Other hot members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. At this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom as posted on this town's website identifying how the public will join. Resident comments, after announcement of the COVID-19 update and general announcements, I will afford public comments as follows. I will first ask for members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to share your screen of your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And the first part of the business is a COVID-19 announcement from Chief Dearborn. It's my turn over to you, Chief.
Thank you. Can anybody hear me all right?
Sounds good.
All right, great. Thank you. So first, thank you to the board for allowing me time to brief you this evening on the COVID-19 pandemic. Numbers are always the hot topic. As of about an hour ago, we have seven active cases in the community. So we're doing fairly well. If you look at the state site, we hit a high of 10 last week. We were actually at a zero point at one point a few weeks ago. The state site does increase, show us as having an increase in cases. That's really the difference between nine cases prior week to 10 cases this week. As you can imagine, the numbers are very dynamic. They change almost hourly as we get new cases in and we take old cases off. This week, obviously with the school reopening, we've had a lot of conversations myself, Beverly Hershorn, school administration about cases and our kind of analysis of it. And we are doing a lot of contact tracing that we, but our public health folks. And a lot of the cases that we're seeing now are actually travel related. So folks that have traveled out of the states, out of the, out of Massachusetts to particularly the southern states have come back with the virus. And then we've had a few cases associated with the Bay State cluster. Generally, our feeling is at this point is our community spread numbers are very, very low. In fact, it's hard to equate anything to actually in-town activities. We are looking at a few cases that may be related to New England-type travel and activities, but we're still working on some of those. When we look at the state average, one of the newest data sets is test positivity in the last 14 days. And we show above the state average at 2.22%, and the state average is 1.83% or 1.67. I apologize, they have two sets of numbers here. However, that includes all tests are taken in our Congress facilities, our LLE facilities. And they are actually doing repeat testing as a protective measure in all those facilities. We back out those actually Congress housing or LLE housing test numbers. We're actually 0.83 positivity within the community. So we're actually doing much better than the state average in that regard. So that does indicate that our level of community spread is still very low. We're working really hard to monitor this. Obviously, school reopening is a big topic right now. We want to do everything in our power to make sure that we don't have a situation that's going to contribute to the lack of success with school reopening. Along those lines, with school reopening and obviously the fall, very concerned about resurgence, obviously summertime and travel. I just want to also note that we're very hopeful that the Governor's travel restrictions will help some of these situations. We've been working hard on stockpiling PPE through various sources. The state has been very generous with PPE. It's currently on hand, we have about 30,000 masks, several thousand gowns, eye goggles, face shields. And we feel like we're in a very good posture right now to provide PPE for town operations. That does not include a significant PPE investment made by the school department, which some of their materials have come in, some have not, but we feel like we have enough in the town supply to bridge them for reopening until their supplies actually arrive. School reopening's been all hands on deck. We have, just in my department, I have three employees pretty much dedicated to supporting the school district in their reopening plans. Last week, we met with school nurses, reviewed facility plans. There was several fire prevention and safety measures that both the police department and the fire department have to consider. Something as simple as a fire drill that we've done for probably 100 years in a COVID environment has to be replanned or a lockdown drill. So we're actively involved in working on that. Also from the town side, our facilities manager and our IT director really have their hands full. Since we added the COVID officer, Andy Frazier, he's working hand in hand with them. From everything from hand sanitizer, ionization machines, signage, I mean, their plates are full. So we've actually, the last note's a financial aspect. Our first FEMA cost recovery claim was in, accepted. They did ask for additional backups, but that is moving along. That one was cut off on May 8th for expenditures. And as soon as we get the last of the submittals for that one, we'll be re-engaging on the submittals for for May 8th to actually June 30th. And then we'll be doing another one. Right now, we're being told to plan on a September 30th cutoff for the FEMA reimbursements. So that's one of the reasons we've been aggressive on procuring PPE to make sure that a minimum of 75% cost recovery we realize for those materials. So that's my COVID briefing. If there's any questions on that, I can move to weather.
Okay, yeah, let's just see if there is any questions. We'll go through Mark Strange. You have any questions?
No questions. Thanks for the update, Chief. You know, I think the perception right now is that cases are ticking up. So without knowing the exact situation in town, it seems like people's anxiety might be rising. But it's great to hear that we're, it sounds like we're generally in single digits. And it sounds like the community spread continues to be low. So I appreciate the update.
Mark, if I just comment back, I think people's anxieties are up and I struggle. And Lynn and I have talked about this a couple of times and how to communicate that accurately. The numbers are so confusing to folks. I mean, I get, literally I entertained five phone calls from residents today. And I try to explain it, but if you're not in it every day, it's very difficult to understand these numbers and the value to them. So I'm certainly open to any suggestions on how to better communicate these numbers to the public to let them know the reality of this. Again, I want to clarify, COVID is still very active in our society. And you need to take all the protective measures. It's still a big challenge, so. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Stephen Morantz?
No questions. I do want to thank the chief for his good work. And I give my sincerest wishes for how the school opening is going to take place. I assume some of that has to come from the Governor's office, but you know, you've got a lot on your plate. So, you know, good luck.
Yeah, I'm very fortunate, I have a very good team with everybody that's working between Beverly and our facilities directors and my folks and IT, they're all really putting 100% in, so.
Okay. And Mark Gold?
No questions at this time.
Okay. And Richard Foster?
Yeah, no questions. Good report, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, thanks for the report. And then Lynn said you may have some just comments about the weather coming through tomorrow?
I do, sir. So obviously, everybody's watching the news. We've been watching the storm since probably mid last week. We're kind of hopeful it was going to take a hard left, a hard right. Unfortunately, it's not. It has taken a little bit of a left turn, so it's got more of a westerly track. So without getting into a lot of weather forecasts or data, the weather, the westerly track actually takes us out of heavy rain. So they've actually had the 556 update, they dropped this down to three-inch area in rain, which is pretty manageable for this town. Caveat, if we have rain ban set up with us and we get a few more inches, we probably will experience the normal flooding spots we do. One of the things I am concerned about though is this is going to be a south easterly wind. Right now, they're projecting somewhere between 5 o'clock and midnight tomorrow night. We'll be in the high 40s, the low 50s with some dust, maybe in the 60s. Not to get too much into trees, but that's not the normal wind direction we experience around here. So there's some, that's a concern to us. We're uprooting and obviously all the trees are foliage loaded right now. So I do anticipate power outages and some blocked roads and things like that. I just want to just real quick, you know, if you see a line down, call 911, stay away from it during the height of the storm. Please stay off the roads. We don't need cars and wires and trees all mixed together. It makes our job more difficult. Tonight, you should be doing some preparation work. Charge your cell phones, charge your iPads, whatever other device you have. If for some reason when we lose power, don't, you know, if you have a generator, make sure it's installed properly. Make sure, please make sure it's wired properly. A generator that backfeeds into the power lines puts power line workers and first responders in a great deal of danger. My firefighter in Summers was actually killed by a back fed generator, so it's a real big deal. If you don't know how to properly hook up a generator, you shouldn't be learning tomorrow. Don't use gas grills or charcoal in your garage. That'll fill your house with CO as will a generator running in your garage. It has potential to kill you. So, and please refrain from candles. So flashlights, charge your stuff. And one thing I want to caution folks with is this is a regional event that says it covers most of Massachusetts. So if power goes out, we could be sitting here for a while waiting for power crews. I just got off a briefing with Eversource. They pre-staged a ton of resources. There are some challenges because they had to bring resources from the west where COVID was less and also out of Canada. They didn't want to bring resources up from down south because of the pandemic. So please be patient, you know, bear with us as we try to get your power restored. But I do anticipate power outages, so, and some high winds. It should be over by Wednesday morning. I do anticipate it ramping up tomorrow. And we'll ask people to be weather aware. There's a potential for embedded tornadoes.
Spray your hat and put it on.
So if you need, you really need to keep your media on or if you have weather alerts. If you have, if we do get a tornado warning like happened last night in western Hammond County, lowest level of your house, interior rooms, and keep your cell phone with you and keep your shoes on. That was actually pointed out to me as a piece of advice we should give. That way, if for some reason your house is hit by the tornado, you can communicate with first responders and identify that you're there, so. And I'll entertain any questions about the weather.
Oh, that sounds great. But let's check, Mark Strange?
No questions. Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Stephen Morantz?
No questions.
Mark Gold?
No question.
Richard Foster?
No questions.
Yeah, I just, you know, if families haven't been challenged enough by being so contained in their houses by COVID-19, now they get to do it by candlelight without any electronics. I'm just glad I don't have small children at home, but good luck to those who do.
Yeah, charge them up tonight.
Yeah, charge them up, maybe they'll last longer. So the next thing in terms of announcements, I know that there's one announcement. I just want to be quick one that if you notice, the agenda is a pretty bare bones agenda. There are a few things that we need to discuss, but it's really just a time for the board to make some adjustments. And so we'll talk about that further. Now, Mark Strange, I know that you had some information to share with us.
Yeah, so there's a, there is a legal action in the DC Circuit Court of Appeals. Food and Water Watch, which is a nonprofit based in DC, they're kind of an environmental watchdog. They filed a petition for review with that DC Circuit Court of Appeals of the FERC environmental assessment of Tennessee Gas's Agomom 261 project and metering station. So as part of the permitting process through FERC, Tennessee Gas had to submit an environmental assessment showing all potential environmental impacts of the new replacement of the pipeline in Agomom and the proposed metering station at Long Meadow. And according to Food and Water Watch, FERC didn't comply with their statutory obligation to consider all of those environmental impacts. And essentially what they're doing is they're asking the DC Circuit to kick it back to FERC to fully complete their environmental assessment. So just wanted to give the board an update on that case, because I know we had talked about it previously.
Okay. Thanks for keeping us posted and I'm sure there'll be more for future agenda on that. Lynn, did you have any announcements that you want to share?
I don't have any announcements tonight.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any announcements that? Okay. Then we'll next move to resident comments. I don't know, Lynn, has anyone signed in for resident comments tonight?
They haven't yet. If there's somebody on the Zoom or on the audio that wants to speak, you can, I have somebody here. One second. It's like Rebecca Townsend, are you on the call? Did you want to say something?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Go for it.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Rebecca.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Two comments, one longer than the other. The first is-
Your address again is just-
Thank you. Rebecca Townsend, 160 Ely Road.
Thank you.
I have a compliment for the board. I want to thank them for the effort that they're making in addressing anti-racism in our town. It's a difficult issue and I appreciate that the town is looking at this. But I'd like to speak a little bit more on the informal discussion that Mr. Foster initiated at the end of the last Select Board meeting. Long Meadow has had the same form of government for over 220 years. And after a broad coalition of citizens collaborated to address some of the key problems of our government, only 16 years ago, we created our charter. And the annual report of the year after voters approved the charter in this change of local governance, the Select Board Chair wrote that Long Meadow voters overwhelmingly supported the Charter Commission's work. As the elected clerk of that Charter Commission, I wrote the minutes and they are hardly minute. They are copious descriptions of deliberations. So it's not just the actions taken, it's the reasons why we took those actions. And those deliberations were among the elected Charter Commissioners, Chair Roger Wojcik, Vice Chair Arlene Miller, me, Kathleen Grady, William Hoff, Peter Landon, Roger Nato, and Joe Cutie. And I encourage you to seek these minutes from the town clerk. And I also offer to be a resource to you in answering questions that you may have about why decisions were made in a certain way. And I can point to the minutes where that explain all of that. Together with the steady citizen contributions, this wide-ranging group of commissioners looked at what the problems were in town. We looked at how the town faced certain problems and how the structure of government fostered certain problems and generated more. We researched several alternatives with many different variations among them. And we were systematic as well as wide-ranging in the work. We narrowed in on specific solutions and identified those solutions that worked together to address the problems that we faced. And by and large, the problems that we faced were management-related. Some people may argue that we haven't fully implemented those changes, but we as a town didn't let the charter go unexamined. And our recent Charter Review Committee chaired by David Martel, former Citizen of the Year, Tass Angelides, Liz Bone, Michael Clark, Peter Landon, Arlene Miller, Jerry Nallett, Larry Starr, they all recently completed their work. And I understand that the Select Board is examining their reports' recommendations in a piecemeal fashion. It's important to note that we've only had two prior town managers and our third is a person not yet into a full year in the position in a time dominated by a response to a global pandemic that found Long Meadow at one point in the ninth worst hotspot locations. And Lynn Simmons, if I may, with her colleagues in the government, has put in place measures and systems that keep our community safe. She has an inclusive approach to management and citizen engagement and one that I've been very pleased to see places a high premium on citizen knowledge, citizen engagement, and citizen voice. And if this is a mischaracterization, let me know, Town Manager Simmons. But she recognizes that our town legislators are smart, engaged people who have demonstrated capacity for reason and a desire to do what's right. And so when we're not in a crisis mode, I look forward to working with her and you and others in town government to develop more opportunities for citizen engagement. Elected officials who relate to citizens from mutual exploration of community problems collaborate together. We focus on issues that are problems and seek ways to make our community better. Having a town manager who's eager to do just that makes this a really exciting time in our town's history. Our voters approved a charter that improves the management of town functions, improves processes, and improves town decision-making while enhancing opportunity for citizen voice unfettered by partisanship or lobbying. And just when people are trying to be heard in more equitable ways, as the first comment that I spoke on was, now is the time is to work, now is the time that we should be working with citizens to seek additional involvement and engagement. So I look forward to working with you, our town manager, and others in solving problems together with our fellow community members. And I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Rebecca. Lynn, do we have any other resident comments that have identified themselves?
Not yet. If you do want to speak, you can either unmute yourself or you can send me something through chat.
I would like to speak.
Okay, just identify yourself, your name and your address.
Andrew Fox, 29 Lorenne Street.
Okay, Mr. Fox, go ahead.
I wish to respond to the slanderous insinuations made against me by Jonathan David during the resident comments portion of the last Select Board meeting. Using the proper town protocol to report actual, and in his case egregious and continuous bylaw violations is not harassment. And Mr. David has been informed of that by a judge when he previously tried this tactic in a courtroom during a legal action that he instituted to deflect from taking personal responsibility for his own actions. The sole reason for my complaints to the town regarding bylaw violations is to maintain my family's quality of life and the value of our property that you tax us on. That is exactly why our town and others have bylaws. I don't decide how the town enforces them. They should be enforced equally, whether that be reactively or proactively, but either way, they should be enforced. They should also be enforced swiftly and decisively and not be allowed to fester for years which only causes further animosity like what is going on in our neighborhood. This was another recommendation of the judge in that same case, and he admonished the town for it. I look forward to your discussion under number two of new business. These emails bring to light just the kind of thing that Mr. David perpetrated against me. Although we have the First Amendment, which protects freedom of speech, we also have defamation laws that protect against slander. It is unclear as to whether the Select Board has any rules governing the resident comments or any other portion of your meetings. Mr. Foster's email seemed to indicate that the Select Board members and their families might enjoy some protections, but whether that is true- But whether that is true and whether that extends to others in the community was not addressed. Mr. LaCusa's response seemed to indicate that there may be some rules, but they don't always apply depending on who is speaking or what the topic is. Hopefully, your discussion later will clarify this. I know that there are rules for speakers to follow at town meeting. So if there are any at select board meetings, it would behoove this group to make that clear tonight. And perhaps it should be announced at the beginning of each meeting and enforced by the chair. I can only assume that there are none since nobody made any attempt to interrupt Mr. David nor to make any statement at the conclusion of his slanderous remarks against me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other folks going to make a resident comment?
Not that I'm seeing. Again, you can unmute yourself or you can use the chat function to identify that you'd like to speak.
Okay. Well, I guess we will move on to select board comments. And so, Mark Gold, any select board comments?
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I have a few comments. The first one I want to do is somewhat of a follow-up to Mr. Fox's comments. But you know, at the last select board meeting, one of our residents made comments and with that, they showed, he asked that we show some photos. I just want to comment that, you know, had we been able to meet in person, you know, we have plenty of people who've come to our meeting with the paraphrase Arlo Guthrie with, you know, glossy color photos with circles and arrows and a paragraph on the back of each one. And that's clearly their right to do, and I don't have any problem with it. But it's the first time I saw the pictures, they kind of flashed by pretty quickly. And they left an impression, and I just wanted to correct the impression or at least give what I now analyze the impression to be. Because I went through the pictures. There were 35 pictures shown. They actually represented only 23 separate homes that I could tell. And of those 23, 11, I couldn't see a bylaw violation. Now, again, I'm not the be all and end all of our bylaws, but there was nothing so obvious that I would say clearly is a bylaw violation. So, you know, if we end up that there were 12 potential, potential bylaw violations out of 55 houses or 5,500 houses in town, you know, clearly, you know, we'd like to have none, but that's not the end of the world. So, you know, if it left people and gave the impression this is going on all over town, it isn't. And I just want to clarify that, having gone through the pictures. Second comment I just wanted to make is that, you know, we call this period of time in our select board meeting, for the earlier period of time, residence comments. And I'd just like to ask that we maintain that comment section for residents only. Last meeting, we had non-residents speak. You know, it's an important topic that we spoke on. I know there are a lot of important topics, but I think the topic was covered very clearly by residents. They gave their opinion and this person, you know, just added more to the information. Again, as Mr. Fox noted, are there rules to residence comments? There are few. They're mostly traditional, but one of them is they're residence comments. It's not a public forum and I'd just like to keep it that way and remind us that we ought to do that. The third comment I have is just an observation. On August 1st, you know, enhanced unemployment allowance for nationally for people decline. I gotta believe that the town of Long Meadow, you know, is pretty representative of the rest of the country and people in Long Meadow aren't exempt from the economic impacts of COVID-19 and the pandemic. And, you know, I'm concerned that we're just kind of going about our business here and not looking at how this is impacting our neighbors. And frankly, I was trying to, I was wondering if we couldn't maybe engage other members of the Select Board, perhaps in an upcoming Select Board meeting, to talk about things that we'd have in our authority, level of authority, to try to help people address this most unusual financial and other circumstances in the town. You know, there's got to be people who are hurt, that, you know, the unemployment is 20%. You know, there's millions of people that have lost their jobs and people in Long Meadow have to be impacted by it. And I'd love to see if there's anything we can do within our, you know, our general capability. Generally, we turn this over to our social services group, but frankly, as a community, we're geared to address social services to the elderly, to the people who are on fixed incomes. And I'm on a fixed income. I gotta tell you, fixed income is a great place to be during a pandemic because your income's fixed. You know, and so it's the people who are out of jobs, the people whose houses are threatening that, you know, the average tax bill is, I don't know, probably $8,500, $9,000 a year. You know, if you don't have a job and your tax bills are due, we've got it, there's got to be something the Select Board can do to address this for our residents. And I'd like to kind of put that in on our watch list and see if there's something we can come up with collectively and solicit to help town employees to do that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Okay, Richard Foster?
Yeah, I have one quick one. I agree with what Mr. Fox was saying. I think we need to be very much aware of what's being put on air and what we're sitting in agreement with. And that was the essence of the email that will be brought up later, that I thought was inappropriate, some of the comments that were made and the accusations without foundation. Mark, it's a good point, Mark. I was going to mention something and I just put it aside. I know a couple of, about a month or so before we went into COVID-19, I was talking with one of the people that does the Meals on Wheels. And at that time, I believe they said they were making 90 deliveries a day. It'd be interesting to see what that has climbed to at this point. It may not have climbed, but it'd be interesting to see the direction it's going in. And I do agree with you. I'm also retired on a fixed income, so I'm not caught in the same predicament that a lot of people are caught in. And I totally agree. I think it would be a good issue for us to take up and see if there's something that we're overlooking because we're not feeling the pain that's being felt to the community. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Mark. That's it, Tom.
Thank you. Stephen Morantz?
Yes, can only reiterate what Mr. Gold said. First, I do not think that non-residents should speak at residence speak time. So I agree that's, that's an issue. And secondly, you know, as the local government, if there is anything that we can do to alleviate people's pain and suffering from COVID-19, I think that is, that's something we should take up.
Okay. Mark Strange?
Nothing tonight. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things. One was, you know, if you looked at the minutes, you will see that the individual Marcello Federico, he does currently live in Asheville. He was a 2011 graduate of Long Meadow High School. He still is connected to the address at 186 Meadowlark. And so, you know, I guess if we make it just current residents, then I guess we'll have to talk more about that. In terms of, you know, freedom of speech, a person has a constitutional right to tell their story. And the Select Board has no authority to limit that freedom of speech unless the speech is unlawful. The statement made was the speaker's truth about racism in our town. He did not name the person or make any attempt to slander their name. And, you know, criticism of their right to share their town experience, you know, is something we were going to have to put up with. I think it's difficult to hear negative things said about our town. But again, I believe the conflict belongs in the public forum, that we can handle the conflict and that we may grow from it. And so, you know, I think we'll try to keep improving and I appreciate comments people have made. And Mr. Fox, I appreciate you coming back and maybe the situation gets resolved soon. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the old business approval of the minutes for July 20th, kind of a motion to try the-
We have a town manager's report, Tom?
Oh yes, sorry. Yes, town manager's report, Mark. Thank you. I'm not 100% tonight. Yes, Lynn, could you give us a manager's report?
Sure, yep. And I want to thank Paul Pesterzic for pulling this together in my absence last week while I was on vacation. I will quickly touch upon the items that Paul has prepared. Last week on Wednesday night, the 29th, there was an open space and recreation plan public forum. It was held via Zoom. A good discussion took place. It's going to help develop the final draft that is expected to be available in the middle of August. The building commissioner, along with town council, reached an agreement with a resident regarding complaints of overnight parking of commercial vehicles and equipment. In exchange for waiving of the fine, the resident will properly store commercial vehicles in an enclosed garage if stored overnight. No equipment will be stored on the property unless the equipment is being used on the property, in which case the building inspector must be notified. June 19th was added to the list of state holidays. Personnel policies and collective bargaining agreements will have to be modified and reviewed to reflect that observance. Fire Captain Carl Zinnack retired on July 30th after 33 years as a career firefighter. During his tenure, Captain Zinnack served many years as the department's mechanic. Prior to becoming a career firefighter, Captain Zinnack was an explorer and a call member of the department for five years. We wish him the best on his future endeavors. The annual MIA Risk Management Grant Program information was recently received. The town can apply for up to $10,000 grants to assist and support risk management initiatives. Applications are due in early November and we're currently reviewing what we would want to submit for. The state sent out information regarding FY21 estimated Chapter 70 and undesignated general government aid categories of state aid. The amounts were positive to $125,000 from the May revision. However, local receipt estimates have to be further amended downward to absorb the declines that we've seen beyond those May revisions. Overall, the two should offset each other and leave us right back where we planned in May with a surplus of $200,000 above the $311,000 target excess levy capacity set in the FY21 budget goals. At the writing of this memo on July 31st, which was Friday, town hall closed at 2:00 PM for an exterminator to come in and spread building. No one could be here when they did that. And the only thing I would add that was not included in this report because it was an update from this morning, the sign enforcement, that all of the signs that had popped up along the tree belt over the last few months, we began town enforcement of it today. For those that didn't voluntarily remove their signs, a sweep of William Street from Long Meadow Street to Frank Smith Road was done along with Bliss, Frank Smith, Wolf Swamp, and Shaker. And we will continue addressing other streets tomorrow. If you do see a street and the sign hasn't been removed, you can feel free to shoot me an email with that address. And we will make sure that the Department of Public Works, the Building Department, or the Police Department remove those signs. That's all I have for an update. Thanks.
Okay, great, thanks Lynn. First, to make sure that we're corrected, on item number three, is that supposed to be Juneteenth, which is like the 10th of June?
Yes, yes. Auto correct, I think.
Oh, correct. That's what I thought. Like, okay, so that is Juneteenth. Okay, just so, and we'll go through, any questions, Mark Gold?
Thank you.
Mark, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, sorry. Richard Foster?
None.
Okay, Steve Morantz?
No.
And Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Okay, great. And again, thank you, Mark, for keeping me on point with the agenda. So now we will go to old business and I'll look for a motion to accept the minutes of July 20th.
So moved. So moved, second.
Okay. Mark and then second by Richard. And Debbie, will you take the roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then the second thing is to approve the polling location to have the change. And Lynn, I don't know if you want to just say anything more about that?
Sure, I can gladly do that. So this is changing. It was changing quite rapidly. When I brought this to you at your July 20th meeting, we had just received some guidance, but it certainly wasn't enough. It left us with a lot of questions. So we did need to do a report. We reached out to the Elections Commission. They gave us a copy of another community's report that was done, and we also completed the survey that's required. So as you will see in the packet, there is a draft report here based on town department review of Greenwood as a polling location. And I would ask that you take a vote on this so that we could notify Elections Commission and then begin our code red call to all registered voters and get our signage ready. And so we can plan for the September 1st election and then the November 3rd election at Greenwood.
Okay, so hopefully everyone had a chance to look at the report. Mark Gold, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. So at the last meeting, I thought despite your comment that we needed to have a study, we still voted to accept the polling change. So what's different with this?
Correct. So part of what you did at the last meeting was, it was, I did a memo. It wasn't your report. So this is your report that you would be signing. We received clarification from Elections Commission. Because we didn't have clear guidelines by the time you met on July 20th, but we did get them on, I think it was the 22nd. And we got a copy of, it was actually West Springfield's report. And we've modified that based on our needs here. And also completed the survey that's required anytime you're changing a polling location, just to make sure that there's ADA access.
So this applies to both the primary and the general election in November?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, Steve Morantz?
Just a question in terms of folks who want to campaign for their candidate, set up tents or signs, whatever, is there going to be, is there any places to be clearly demarcated for that? Or is it catch a sketch can? Or how is that going to work?
No, it will be clearly marked. We've already looked at the area to the left side of the driveway as you pull in. There's green space there and sidewalk area there. That's one area we've identified, but it will be clearly marked that day.
All right. Any other questions? Steve?
No.
Okay.
Tom, I have a question. Lynn, normally we don't do traffic. You know, we don't have a traffic officer. We have just somebody at the polling places. Given the fact that this is a single entrance and exit, is that part of this plan? I didn't-
Yes, yes. It's not included in this document here unless it's in the state health and safety plan. It might be. I'm just quickly looking at it now. But we did discuss this at, we had an internal traffic meeting on the 22nd. And we did discuss this there. They will have a detail there that day, both elections.
Okay, thank you.
Great, okay. Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Yeah, and I have no further questions. So we'll look for a motion to accept this relocation of a polling place?
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
A second, I'll second it.
Okay, Mark Gold, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. Deb, would you like to roll call for us?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, great. And now we'll move on to another mandatory, you know, new business item, which is primary election warrant. We will receive the document. And does anyone have any questions on that before we call for a vote? Mark Gold?
No questions.
Richard Foster?
No questions.
Steve Morantz?
No questions.
Mark Strange?
Nope.
Okay, so can we have a motion to accept this primary election warrant?
I'll move, we approve the primary election warrant for September 1st.
Richard Foster, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. And so then the last item of our agenda is open meeting law discussion, which I placed on here. And basically, my intention in discussing the open meeting law is not to diminish the contributions of any member of the Select Board. Each of us contributes to this policy setting process in a way that is unique and valuable. I would also like to be clear that getting feedback on our actions is valuable. Now, the state has some specific guidelines in the way feedback is to be shared among board members. The Select Board has freedom of speech, but as elected officials, we do need to accept limitations. Limitations on private deliberations are in place to keep the workings of government transparent. Limitations to the members of Select Boards are described in state statute regarding violations of open law, of open meeting laws. For example, under the open meeting law, public bodies can only conduct business through public meetings unless an exemption allowing executive session. The additional communication for the second or third or fourth member of a board is not allowed when you have a board of five, because this is an attempt to influence a quorum of the board behind the scenes. Lining up votes for an important decision before the board would be the worst kind of violation. And negative comments about other board members would be a lower degree of violation, but a violation nonetheless. We hear so much about the need for transparency in government. I have made the assumption that all board members have not deliberated with more than one Select Board member. That is perfectly legal. My assumption was called into question recently, what has brought to my attention that an email I received was also sent to an additional member of the board. The technique used for this violation was deceptive in order to deceive the receiver of the open meeting law violation that was addressed only to them. Sending emails to several members of a board is not acceptable in state statute because you are deliberating with a quorum of the board. For a five-person Select Board, the member may not deliberate in private on any issue with more than one other board member. The email in your packet is a deliberation with a quorum of the board that was brought to my attention. I really found myself in a situation where I could confront the violation or be seen as condoning it by not saying anything. My reaction was to contact Attorney General's Office and ask if this needed to be reported by me as a chair. I will share the response they sent me in regards to open meeting law violations and how they suggested it should be handled. So the response from the Attorney General's Office. Good morning, Tom. Thank you for contacting the Division. If you are concerned that a member is communicating via email, then perhaps the best solution at this point would be to discuss it during an open meeting and remind the members of their obligations under the open meeting law. The law defines deliberation as in oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail between or among a quorum of the public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. The open meeting law does not carve out an exemption to the definition of deliberation for discussions that do not result in a decision or vote. Any communication among a quorum of a public body on matters that are pending or will become before within the public body's jurisdiction is considered deliberation. Moreover, the expression of an opinion of one public body member on matters within the body's jurisdiction to a quorum of the public body is a deliberation, even if no other public body member responds. This also appears to, applies to serial communications where members individually discuss matters with one another, but end up reaching a quorum in a serial fashion. You could also make the emails you've received public by reading their content during the meeting and listing the emails in the meeting minutes, or by referencing the emails during a meeting and posting the emails along with the minutes on the municipal website. Perhaps other members will follow your lead if they have also received similar emails, or you could suggest that the emails be released so that your public body does not end up being in violation of open meeting law. Finally, you could always file an open meeting law complaint against your own public body and address the issue in that way. I hope this information was helpful. Since, sincerely, Kerry Kilcoyne, Assistant Senator General, Division of Open Government. And so I see no purpose in reading emails and questioning. The content is an attempt to influence the thinking of members of the board in the judgment of Mr. Kilcoyne, or he wouldn't have suggested that I take the action of sharing them with the public. And so I think we just need to keep all of our deliberations public from here on out. And so that's why I've kind of dedicated this meeting to this issue. And it is a discussion, so I will open the floor. Mark Gold, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a lot of comments, but I'm gonna hold them. You know what? The issue of open meeting law violations is obviously very important, it's very critical, it's very specific, and I take the ban on open meeting law violations very, very seriously. But I gotta tell you, you know, I do that to myself and not to others, and, you know, I'm not the open meeting law police. The open meeting law police is the Attorney General's Office. And so, I let people know what's a violation. I've had people send me, for example, political letters to my Long Meadow email address, and they get an automatic response back that says, you can't be sending political things through the Long Meadow email system. So I'll police myself, I ask everybody else on the board to police themselves, but if we're gonna start policing others, it's a real slippery slope, Tom. And it starts with things like, how do we decide who becomes chair? And how many phone calls were made? As you said, lining up votes in advance is a violation of open meeting law. So we gotta watch what we do here because it's a slippery slope. I'm watching out for me and that's where it ends.
Thank you for your comments, Mark. Richard Foster?
Yeah, the email, are you saying that that email that you have there is an open meeting law violation?
I'm saying that the Attorney General's Office said that we should disclose these emails and discuss them as a violation, yes.
No, no, that's not the point. I'm saying, are you saying that that email that you got in front of you is an open meeting law violation?
If it was directed only to me, it would not be an open meeting law violation.
You have evidence that that was directed to someone else?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then, are you aware that that disclosure on that point was another open meeting law violation?
So I immediately called the Attorney General's Office.
No, I'm not talking about calling the Attorney General's Office, I'm saying that that was another open meeting law violation. Like Mark said, the slippery slope?
Right, okay.
Be careful.
Okay. Okay, Steve Morantz?
I don't have any particular comments on this issue, but my only comment would be is that I believe that when people are speaking, people really need to pay attention to what is being said. I think if that had been the case, this whole issue would be moot.
Thank you. Mark Strange?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So I, you know, I'm obviously relatively new to the board, so I'm continually learning certainly about the open meeting law violations, and this is one that I wasn't aware of, even though I've had some experience in Agawam. This was a good exercise to see, you know, talking about round robin deliberation or serial deliberation. So I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront. I would just be, I would be remiss if I didn't mention one of the comments in the email, particularly considering that, you know, we just declared or voted to declare racism as a public health crisis. So in Richard's email to Tom on July 21st at 4:48, he says, the resident commenter was still spreading the thoughts of racism in our community, which is not a positive message. The implication there is that we shouldn't be talking about racism because it isn't a positive message, but that is exactly the point of talking about racism. So I think that that exchange and that message misses the point, to say the least.
Okay, thank you for your comments. My only comments is in defense of my, you know, being chair. You know, obviously I did not talk to Mark Gold about voting for me, and I did not talk to Richard Foster about voting for me. I did talk to Mark Strange, and when I spoke to Steve Morantz, he was not a member of the board. He was running for the board. And if that's a violation of open meeting law, I would be surprised, but I guess I could look into it. But that is it. I appreciate your being patient with this, just because in order to move forward effectively as a group, we all need to be on the same page in terms of how we're gonna give each other feedback. And, you know, I don't know if anyone has any suggestions that would help us as we move forward. I'll just open that up, I won't do a roll call. Does anyone have any thoughts about that, addressing that? I know Mark had said we should just police ourselves, which is a great idea. Any other comments?
I mean, I would just say that now that we know the rule, everybody knows the rule about serial deliberation, that we shouldn't do it. And obviously we'll self-police, but it's an open meeting law violation, so we should stop doing it. Very simple.
Okay. Any other comments? The other thing would be that I had toyed with the idea that if we were going to send emails to other members of the Select Board, that we could also send that mayor, that email to the town manager. And if we received an email that was like that, addressed to us and to the town manager, then we would know that, you know, she would be aware if that was being sent to one person and then sent to another person and then sent to a third person. So I don't know if people have any feedback on something like that or any other suggestions.
Tom, copying the town manager doesn't, you know, if I, I send a message to everybody and copying Tom, the town manager, if I'm offering an opinion, I can copy, it doesn't, you know, protect me from being an open meeting law violation. So the issue is you can't deliberate. You know, what's information versus what's deliberation? That's a fine line. And again, we each have to police ourselves, and clearly there will become a point where somebody thinks that they're sending information and somebody else thinks they're deliberating. And that's a concern. I mean, I probably attended five or six or seven formal trainings on the open meeting law. You know, I challenge everybody else on this board to do the same thing. It's not intuitively obvious. It is, some of these things are very, very subtle, especially when it comes to chain communications or deliberations. But, but again, the difference between, you know, I can send out a note to everybody that says, you know, I'm, you know, I'm busy next Tuesday, can we skip the meeting? That's not a deliberation, and that's perfectly legal as far as I know. But if I tell people, hey, on the next meeting, here's how I think I'm gonna vote, here's my arguments, that's clearly illegal. And the difference is in between those two. And that's why I'm saying, you know, we all ought to educate ourselves. I remember our town council used to do a session for, it's not just the Select Board, it applies to all the, all the, you know, committees that we have, the town committees that we have. We used to do sessions and have everybody go to it because I think it's important. It's, they're fine lines, and as I said, if people understand it, they'll police themselves.
Mark, thanks for your comments. Any other comments? Lynn, I don't know if you have anything you want to weigh in on. You know, you don't have to.
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. So if that is it, I will...
Tom, can I just ask that, you know, that since a couple of people seem to agree with my comment, can we, I don't know, it's not an agenda item, but I don't know if we want to just put it on the agenda next time, but we'd ask Paul and Lynn to maybe noodle on this for the next couple of weeks and see if they can add anything of what's in our authority and power? You know, what are people looking for, what might be available to help people impacted, you know, financially impacted by the pandemic in our town? And again, I don't want to address it and discuss it now, but I think we need to identify, is it just gonna be an open meeting or are we gonna try to have our experts, basically Paul and Lynn, come in with some suggestions, or do we just wanna kind of throw it open, shoot it around a while and then send them out and come back with something following me?
Okay, well, I definitely...
It's for you to decide, but I think we talked about it.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely take notes on things like this, and so does Deb House, and so we will definitely put that on as a future agenda item, so. And if that's it, we will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for everyone. Have a good evening.